Today we have to discuss target SSC, CGL and CHSL pure maths session nine. Okay, question number one, first question. See, in the given figure PQ is the diameter, PQ is the diameter of the semicircle. Diameter, diameter means immediately what is the theorem we have to remember? Angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, right? So first clue we have and O is the center. If angle AOB equal to seventy-two degrees, angle AOB means angle at the center we know. Angle at the center means immediately another theorem we have to remember that is degree measure theorem. So in question two theorems we are observing, one is cyclic one, sorry. One is angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, second one is degree measure theorem, right? Inka yavun nae chodam. So BP cuts AQ, BP cuts, BP cuts AQ at M and then what is the value of AMP? So AMP, so this angle we have to find, this theta value we have to find, right? Now see, so now they got two clues now, what are the clues? Angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, right? Now see, now what is angle? So QAP or PAQ, so this PAQ angle is how much? Ninety degrees, PAQ angle is ninety degrees, PAQ equal to ninety degrees angle on a semicircle. Okay, so angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees. So what is the second clue we have? Degree measure theorem, what degree measure theorem? See with AB at OE is, with AB at OE seventy-two means same with AB at P is how much it is? So in that half, that is how much? Thirty-six degrees. How na kada? So degree measure theorem, so sector thodi, so with a chord with AB, with at center it is seventy-two means with the same AB at P is how much? Thirty-six degrees, right? So angle AOB equal to two times of angle APP which there are degree measure theorem. So AOB is how much? Seventy-two degrees, therefore what is angle APB? APB is thirty-six degrees, right? Inka yavun dey, so in this triangle the sum of three angles is how much? One-eighty, that is ninety plus thirty-six plus theta equal how much? One-eighty degrees, so theta equal how much? Fifty-four degrees, so option B is the right answer. Okay, so you could have two clues, clearly we are observing two clues in this question. Two clues, one is angle on a semicircle, second one is degree measure theorem, okay? Right, and then next one, second question. What is the distance between the center of two circles of radius twelve centimeter and eight centimeter? C is twenty-eight centimeter, then find the length of the transverse common tangent. Transverse common tangent formula, what is the transverse common tangent formula? Square root of D square minus R one plus R two whole square. Everything we know, each and everything we know, so what is D, D anta? What is the distance between them, distance between them is twenty-eight, so that is twenty-eight square minus R one plus R two. What is R one plus R two? So twelve plus, that is twelve plus eight whole square means, emochindi? Twenty-eight square minus twenty square means, so square root of A square minus B square means, A square may A plus B into A minus twenty-eight plus twenty is forty-eight into twenty-eight minus twenty is so eight. So forty-eight into eight, so how we can write sixteen three is forty-eight, so this how we can write four two is eight. So sixteen square root is four, four square root is two and root six, that is how much? Eight root six, so what is the length of the transverse common tangent? Eight root six, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right, then, next another geometry question. In the given figure AD equal to DC equal to BC, if angle BEC equal to one or eight degrees, what is angle ADC? So what is given? AD equal to DC equal to BC. So these three sides are equal, means what we are observing here, manu kienkana paduthindi here, how many isosceles triangles are there? Two isosceles triangles are there, so in isosceles triangle if it is theta, idhi theta ide, idhi kodan thootindi? Theta yekada? Right, so this is theta, theta means this exterior angle, so theta, theta means the exterior angle is equal to some of the opposite interior angles, so this is how much? Two theta, manali again is the isosceles triangle yekada? Isosceles triangle, this is two theta means this part is also how much? Two theta, two theta, two theta means the third angle is how much? One-eighty minus four theta, how na? So we know the sum of angle on a straight line, straight line angle sum is how much? One-eighty degrees, that is theta plus one-eighty minus four theta plus one not eight equal how much? One-eighty, so one-eighty, one-eighty cancel, so three theta equal how much? One-zero-eight, so three, thirty-six, so theta equal how much? Thirty-six, theta emochindi? Thirty-six, but he is not asking theta, what he is asking? ADC, what is ADC? ADC, ADC aduthunadu, so this angle he is asking, ante one-eighty minus theta aduthunadu. So one-eighty minus two theta he is asking, that is one-eighty minus two theta he is asking, how na kada? ADC aduthunadu, ante what is one-eighty minus seventy-two, that is how much? One-zero-eight degrees, so what is answer? Option C is the right answer. Question number four, charandi, if four root three plus five root two by, indeed four root three plus five root two by, emondi? Forty-eight, forty-eight means how we can write sixteen three is and this is nine two, okay? Sixteen square root means how much? Four root three plus nine square root is three root two. E is equal to, emavun naadu, A plus B root six hundred, how na? So in denominator whenever you are observing, sir, what we have to do? Rationalizing factor we have to do, rationalizing factor seyal kada? So by doing rationalizing factor, what will come? Four root three plus five root two into, ah, plus becomes, numerator veli emothindi? Minus ante, four root three minus three root two by squares difference, squares difference ante forty-eight minus eighteen, nandha? Thirty, so thirty, pochessinaga? So ipudu, seven five, four four sixteen, sixteen three sir, forty-eight minus four three sir, twelve root six plus twenty root six minus five three is fifteen, fifteen two sir, thirty by thirty, ante, so forty ante eighteen plus eight root six by thirty, two thirty. If you divide with two, what will come? Nine plus four root six by fifteen, that is equal to how much? A plus B root six, adhe kada? So what is A, A equal to how much? A is nine by fifteen and B is how much? Four by fifteen, what we have to find? Twenty A plus sixteen, fifteen B, right? So that is twenty into nine by fifteen plus fifteen into four by fifteen, so fifteen, fifteen cancel, so threes, fours, three ones, three threes, that is four threes twelve plus four, that is how much? Sixteen, so what is answer? Option A is the right answer. So, micheal seyal seyal seyal, ontha nandha? Rationalizing factor, rationalizing factor just automatically we can equate, okay? Then, next one, next question, charandi. If X square minus six X minus one equal zero, what is X power five? X power five minus one by X power five. X power five minus one by X power five, idhi kava? So charandi, so if you divide, ilai iprenna kana paduthi, divide with X, X tho divide ches, if you divide with X, what will come? X minus six minus one by X equal to zero, ante, what is X minus one by X? X minus one by X equal how much? Six, if X minus one by X equal to six, what is X power five minus one by X power five ante? Simplega manu chappachu, hundred percent power five unta guduthu padukundi? So power five unta ante, here it is six means power five is also divides ends with six. Kachitanga X power five also ends with six outundanam, manu classroom la neyuchkuntam. So iprenna X minus one by X anathu unta, power five koche dappu, what is the units place here? The same units place come here, adhe units place yekadusindi? So first options check chandi, A is six tho tendai, indhi charandi? Option B anathu tendai, so directly, option B is the right answer, ante, no need to do, cheyal seyal seyal seyal, okay? Actually, how to do this problem? Manu cheyal seyal seyal, X power five minus one by X power five, andela raiyali, X square plus one by X square into X cube minus M, one by X cube minus X minus one by X, idhi manu cheyal. Okay, right, so if X square plus X minus one by X, ante, X square plus one by X square is how much? A square plus two, ante, six square plus two, ante anta, six square plus two, thirty-six means thirty-eight. Similarly, we have to find X cube minus one by X cube, X cube minus one by X cube kodha find out cheyal. What is X cube minus one by X cube? A cube plus three, ante, six into six square plus three, ante, so six into thirty-six, ante thirty-nine, thirty-nine, ante, nine six are fifty-four, five, six three is eighteen, eighteen ante? Two thirty-four, now this we have to substitute, that is two hundred, ikanta thirty-eight into two hundred thirty-four minus six, cheshte, we will get the answer how much? Eight 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 six, idhi manu kusunam. Kani idhamtha cheyal seyal seyal, manu untha, no need to do, asal cheyal seyal seyal seyal, paneleedu, okate guduthu padukundi, iprenna sare. Power five ghanu unta, whenever you are observing power five, simply units places rendu, okate untai, same okate untai. So this point if you know, so intha petha problem ni, just ten seconds la manu problem cheyal seyal, okay na? Right. What is the value of sine fifteen, cos fifteen? So sine fifteen means, I am multiplying with two into two sine fifteen, cos fifteen and raichu. What is two sine theta cost, two sine A, cos A formula? What is two sine A, cos A formula? Sin two A, idhe kada formula? Sin two A, that is one by two into sine two A, ante sine two A means thirty, what is sine thirty? One by two, so one by two into one by two is how much? One by four, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right, then, question number seven. Find the value of sine square forty-eight plus sine square seventy-two, forty-two, minus secant square thirty plus tan square sixty. How we can write sine square forty-two, manu sine square forty-two, andela raichu, cos square forty-eight and raichu kada? If the sum is ninety degrees, iprenna, if the sum is ninety degrees, sine will become cos, cos emothindi, sine outundii, ante forty-two plus forty-eight is ninety or not? Yes, exactly, so sine squares forty-two, we can write it as cos square forty-eight and raichu kada? Now what we are understanding here? Sin square theta plus cos square theta, what is sine square theta plus cos square theta identity? Sin square theta plus cos square theta is one, manu one til su, so this total value is how much? This value is how much? One minus secant thirty, what is secant thirty? Secant, secant thirty is two by root three, so two by root three whole square is four by three plus tan sixty. What is tan sixty or root three? Root three whole square is three, ante anto chindi? Four minus four by three, ante four three is twelve, ante eight by three, so option A is the right answer, okay? So only thing we have to substitute the values, value substitute cheyal. Then, if secant theta equal to thirteen by five, what is tan theta minus sine theta plus cos theta? Iprenna sare, trigonometric ratio is given, trigonometric ratio, iprenna cheshte, that question we have to solve by using Pythagoras theorem, kachitanga then use cheyale, Pythagoras theorem use cheyale, right charandi? So what is secant, I am taking, I am writing here theta, what is secant? Secant ante, hypotenuse by adjacent, that is thirteen by five means this is how much? Twelve, five, twelve, thirteen is the combination, how na? Now substitute here, what is tan? Tan means opposite by adjacent, opposite by adjacent means twelve by five minus sine. Sin means opposite by hypotenuse, that is twelve by thirteen plus cos theta, cos theta means adjacent by, adjacent by hypotenuse, that is five by thirteen, ante, twelve by five minus, twelve minus five, ante seven, seven by thirteen, ante sixty-five, can the sixty-five? So five thirteen, 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 twelve, so twelve twelve is one forty-four, ante one fifty-six, okay? One fifty-six minus thirty-five, ante, shivarka one, ante one twenty-one by sixty-five, so one twenty-one by sixty-five is the right answer, okay? So only thing nandha? Jagrattha Pythagoras theorem value substitute, ante, okay? Right, then, next one, next question, see. If A plus B equal to eight and AB equal to thirty-two by three, what is AQ plus B cube? Manu formula thileeda, AQ plus B cube formula, how we can write AQ plus B cube? A plus B whole cube minus three AB into A plus B, idhe kada formula? AQ plus B, we can write it as A plus B whole cube minus three AB into A plus B, everything we have to substitute, what is A plus B? Eight, eight cube minus three into, what is AB? Thirty-two by three into A plus B, eight, how na? Like three, three cancel, if you take eight as common, ekada eight common, this ekada eight square, ante sixty-four minus thirty-two, ante, eight into thirty-two, ante shivarka six ravalay, okay? So two hundred fifty-six is the right answer, so option A is the right answer. Only thing you have to substitute the, that means you have to write the formula and substitute the values, a value substitute is the important, okay now? Right, then, question number ten, tenth question. Sin equal to cos whenever, sin equal to cos when, if A plus B equal to ninety degrees, iprenna, A plus B ninety, ide, what is the condition we discussed? Sin A equal to cos B, idhe kada condition? So whenever sin equal to cos, the sum of the two angles is how much? Ninety degrees, so here sin equal to cos means the sum of two angles is how much? Ninety, that is five theta plus fifty minus three theta equal to how much? Ninety, ante two theta equal to how much? Forty, that means theta equal how much? Twenty, so option A is the right answer. So whenever you are observing sin equal to cos, sin cos equal ga kana padite, so immediately what you have to do? The sum must be equal to how much? Ninety degrees, then equal cheyal, ninety equal cheyal. Next one, see, if root X plus one by root X equal to root seven, what is the value of X cube plus one by X cube? Indeed, root X plus one by root X equal to root seven, ide, X cube plus one by X cube find out cheyal. First, roots, this are the most square chadama? So what is X plus one by X, ante root X whole square plus one by root X whole square? So what is, if X plus, ekada radha pani, if X plus one by X equal to A, what is X square plus one by X square? A square minus two, how na? That is root seven whole square means seven minus two means how much? Five, ante, emochindi, X plus one by X equal to how much we are getting? If X plus one by X equal to five, what is X cube plus one by X cube formula? If X plus one by X equal to A, X cube plus one by X cube formula is A cube minus three A, idhe kada A cube minus three A formula? So what is X cube plus one by X cube? Five cube, ante, five into five square minus three, ante five into twenty-five minus three means twenty-two, ante twenty-two two, five means how much? One hundred ten, so option D is the right answer. Only thing, X plus N by X model, N by X models, oshta ekachitanga? Four models unnae, equations neyuchkunnae, just four models, if four models neyuchkunnae, any X plus N by X equation chechan, previous sessions lo kona manu markadu kona. So compulsariga, we will get question from type one as well as from type two, type two lo kodha oshtaai, okay na? Next one. If A plus B plus C equal to four, AB plus BC plus CA equal to two, then what is AQ plus B cube plus C cube minus three ABC? So direct formula again, so what is AQ plus B cube plus C cube minus three ABC? Manu three formulas neyuchkuntam, so that low one of the formula, so what is AQ plus B cube plus C cube minus three ABC? A plus B plus C into A plus B plus C into A plus B plus C whole square minus three of AB plus BC plus CA. So this is the formula we will discuss for AQ plus B cube plus C cube minus three ABC. Only thing we have to substitution, so what is A plus B plus C? Four into four square minus three into, what is AB plus BC plus CA? That is four into sixteen minus six, that is ten into four is forty, so what is answer? Option D is the right answer, okay? So only formula we have to substitute, AQ plus B cube plus C cube minus three ABC, three formulas manu classroom la, so out of which one of the formula, okay? Right. And then next one, question number thirteen. See, two chords AB and CD of a circle intersect at a point P. Are, two chords intersect each other, if two chords intersect each other, anagane manu immediately, the cases we have to discuss, we have to know. AB and CD are two chords, both are intersecting at a point P, anagane, so what is the condition? Condition is, so PA into, P neyuchekunna, multiply chevantaam, PA into PB equal to, PA into PB equal to PC into PD. Idhe kada manu neyuchkunnae, if two chords intersect each other, so what are the values given? AB is seven, PC is two, PC is two, AP four, AP four, AB seven, ante anto chindi? Three, how na? Then find the value of CD, ante idhi X ankunna, how na? What is the condition, jappuni, PA, ante the four into three equal to PC, two into X, two ones, two two, so X equal to how much? Six, X anto chindi? Six ochindi, var X is six oshte, what is CD? Two plus six, that is how much? Eight, so what is the value of CD? CD is how much? Eight, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right, then. Next one, if P equal to one zero one, what is the value of PQ, cube root of, cube root of P, P into P square? PQ minus three P square plus three P minus one, exactly it is in which formula? A minus B whole cube formula, A is P, B is one, that is P minus one whole cube formula, so root three cube, both are cancel, so P minus one, what is P? One zero one minus one means how much? Hundred, so what is answer? Hundred is the right answer, so option A is the right answer, okay? Right, then, next one, see, the radius of the circle is, the radius of the circle is nine times the radius of the semicircle, intenda? Circle, semicircle, so even hadu, what is given? The radius of the circle, the radius of the circle alone that the radius of the circle is nine times the radius, nine times the radius of the sem, waiti. Nine times, and means if the semicircle is R, radius of the circle is how much? Nine R, okay? So the area of the circle is given one two four seven four, so area of the circle, what is area of the circle formula? Phi R square is given, then find the perimeter of the circle, we have to find the perimeter of the circle, right? So phi R square, so what is given? One two four seven four equal to twenty-two by seven into R, what is R? Nine R, R intika neyundu, capital R, rational pani, so what is that? Nine R into nine R, right? Now cancel, eleven twos, eleven ones, eleven, one, eleven ones, eleven, three, eleven threes thirty-three, so eleven fours forty-four, right? Cancel, right, again two, two fives ten, two, ah, so, right? Two fives ten, two, ante, thirteen undu kada? Two six twelve, two sevens of fourteen, right? Ah, two sevens, seven, one minute, one two four seven four, right, again one minute? Eleven ones, eleven, eleven ones, eleven, three, three, eleven fours forty-four, again two, two fives ten, so two six twelve, twelve ante, one two sevens fourteen, sare bhandi, all right? Seven ones, seven eights, seven eights are fifty-six, seven ones, right? Eight, eight, nine nine cancel, so eighty-one cancel, so R square equal to, emochindi? One, so what is R? R equal to how much? One, so R one ochindi, so if this is one means this is how much? Nine, then find the perimeter of the semicircle, what is the perimeter of the semicircle? The perimeter of the semicircle, the perimeter of the semicircle is thirty-six by seven R. Thirty-six by seven R, thirty-six by seven, sare bhandi? Thirty-six by seven R ochindi, thirty-six by seven, ante R equal to one means P equal to how much? Thirty-six by seven, perimeter of the semicircle, na? So one minute, the radius of the seven, find the perimeter of the semicircle. R equal to one, seven, seven eights fifty-six, seven ones is seven, ah, right? Oh, sorry, neeni mistake chesan ekada? One minute, sorry. So ikada, seven not divided with seven, seven tho divide chedunka du? Divide ela chesesamo, five sixty-seven, five neyukada raayali? Sorry, ah, right, eighty-one tho cancel cheshte, eighty-one sevens cancel, right? So R square equal to forty-nine, sorry, mistake, so R equal to how much? Seven, R equal to seven means thirty-six by seven into seven, means what is the radius, what is the perimeter we are getting? Thirty-six, so option A is the right answer, okay? Chena mistake cheshte, so kindaki denominator cancel chesasamga, right? Then, next one, see, X minus eight whole cube plus, charandi? A cube, idhi A, idhi B, idhi C, ante idhi yala undi? A cube plus B cube plus C cube, same, mali kana paduthindi, charandi? A, this is C, ikada three common, this, if you take three common, three common, this, three X plus four, ante, ikrae undi? Same, B, ante, emondi E is equal to AQ plus B cube plus C cube equal to what we are observing? Three ABC we are observing, AQ plus B cube plus C cube equal to three ABC when if and only if A plus B plus C equal to zero. If A plus B plus C equal to zero, then only AQ plus B cube plus C cube equal to three ABC, right? So that means what is the condition? A plus B plus C equal to zero, that means X minus eight plus three X plus four plus six X plus twenty equal to how much? Zero, ante anto chindi? So this is nine, ten, ten X, ten X, ekada minus four, ante sixteen, plus sixteen equal to zero, right? So X equal to how much? Minus sixteen by ten, means how much? Minus one point six, so X value is how much? Minus one point six, option B is the right answer. So you could, what we are observing? AQ plus B cube plus C cube equal to three ABC, when AQ plus B cube plus C cube equal to three ABC? If and only if A plus B plus C equal how much? Zero, okay? Right, then, next one, question number seventeen, see. In triangle ABC, P is a point on BC such that BP equal to PC is how much? Two is two three, indeed? In triangle ABC, ABC anathu kada triangle, undanta? ABC anathu triangle, in ABC triangle, P is a point such that BP is to PC, two is to three. So BP is to PC, this is in the ratio of two is to three, right? Q is a midpoint of BP, Q anathu, mali intenta midpoint, ante, so this is a Q midpoint, means again it divides in the ratio of one is to one, right? Then what is the area of A, what is the ratio of area of ABQ? ABQ and ABC, very simple, so indeed, whenever adjacent triangles we are observing, iprenna adjacent triangles undi? If the bases are in the ratio of X is to Y, areas are also in the ratio of EX is to YA. Basis in the ratio unnae, one is to E part, E triangle, E tri, so bases are in the ratio of one is to four, ante, the areas are also in the ratio of one is to four. Side by side areas kodha in the ratio undai, one is to four, ante, what is the area of ABQ by, area of ABC? ABQ enthi area undi? One by, ABC total area antundi? Five, so it is in the ratio of one is to five, ante kada? So if the bases are in the ratio of one is to four, areas are also in the ratio of one is to four, ante ratio undai? So, ikada kana paduthindi, irindu one is to four ratio unnae, so vadaduthindi? E part, total part, this part is one and total part is how much? Five, so it is in the ratio of one is to five, okay? Right, then, next question, see. If A plus B equal to six, AB equal to eight, what is AQ plus B cube? Very simple, what is four plus two equal to how much? Six, four plus two equal to six and four into two equal to how much? Eight, easily understand, easyga manu kana paduthindi, ante what is AB? Four and two, ante, four cube plus two cube, that is sixty-four plus eight means how much? Seventy-two, so option D is the right answer, very simple, so what is A? A equal to four and B equal how much? Two, so directly we will get, how na? So AQ plus B cube formula raichu, A plus B whole cube minus three AB into A plus B and raichu, but no need, induku? Clearly we are getting here A and B, clearga kana paduthindi, manu A and B values, so directga substitute cheshte values eputai, okay na? Right. Then, next one, chords, AB and CD intersect at a point P. Mali again, two chords intersect each other, mali chords intersect outunai, if two chords intersect each other means what is the condition we have to know? AB, CD are two chords intersect at a point P, anagane immediately, what is the condition we have to know? P A into P B equal to PC into PD, same problem manu chesen, similar model question, so what is given? AP equal to four, four means PB equal to AB, ten means this is a six, PC equal to five, then find the value of CD. CD value find out cheyal, ante PA anta? Four into six equal to, ante na? Equal to PC, PC, what is PC? A five into X, five into X, how na? Right, now, X equal to how much? Twenty-four by five, ante, four point eight, X value is how much? Four point eight, that means what he was asking, CD, what is CD? CD is how much? Five plus four point eight means how much? Nine point eight, so option C is the right answer. Similar model question manu chesan, antaka, okay na? So iprenna, two chords intersect each other means immediately manu kii, a condition under gutraal, manu neyuchkuntam. Two tangents intersect each other, two chords intersect each other, two secants intersect each other, a tangent and a secant and, secant intersect each other. Ella four cases manu markadu kuntam, classroom lo, okay? So that the chords intersect each other and a condition each other, okay? Then, next one, question number twenty, last one. So see, sine forty-four, sine forty-four degrees by cos forty-six degrees plus sine square sixty minus cos square forty-five plus secant sixty. So that is the question, so just see, cos forty-six, anta manu lari chu, sine forty-four and ras kocha? Why, because the sum is how much? Ninety degrees, sum ninety, indeed, ante sine forty-four, sine forty-four, both are cancel, ante one plus, what is sine sixty? Sine sixty is root three by two, root three by two whole square is three by four minus cos forty-five, what is cos forty-five? One by root two, one by root two whole square. One by root two, one by root two whole square is one by two plus secant sixty, what is secant sixty? Two, ante? Three, so three by four minus one by two is one by four, ante the thirteen by four. So option A is the right answer, only value substitution, okay? So this is today's session, session number nine, right? So in next session, some more questions we will discuss, right? Thank you.